From the Select Board of anything that's not on the agenda, one wants to, anyone wants to say? None? Amy? None? Anyone from?
Yeah. I have something. Just sadly, it's been one year since we lost our former colleague, Jared Collins.
Oh.
And I've been thinking about his family all day. I know, you know, it was so hard for them and I think it's still extremely hard. So, you know, if you see them, reach out and, you know, hold them in your heart because I know they're very saddened by it still.
Right. Awful stuff. Thank you, Amy. All right, anything else? Anyone from the general public that would like to tell us anything that's not on the agenda either here in the room or online? Anyone online?
Anyone from Climate Action want to come over? The room is full next door.
Oh, the room's full next door with Climate Action. Yes, well, I was talking with them today. All right, so this next thing on the agenda is the poll hearing. Let me get the reading here. All right. A public hearing will be held on Monday, October 21, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the Euro Mountain Meeting Room at the Eastham Town Hall, 2500 State Highway, and by remote participation regarding Plan Number 15738002 dated February 26, 2024, from N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy, who requests permission to install handhold 5/HA51-5 and a 45-foot plus or minus 1-3-inch conduit and locate underground cables, conduits, manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures in, under, and along and across Sammaset Road. Do I have to read the rest of this? Maybe I should. The meeting will be held in the Euro Mountain Room at the Eastham Town Hall, 2500 State Highway. Remote participation information will be available at the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov within 24 hours of the hearing. All right. So is anyone from?
Marissa.
Marissa, you're on. You have the floor.
I am. Thank you very much again, Marissa Jackson with the Rights and Permits Department at Eversource. So just to elaborate briefly, we have an existing pole along Sammaset Road. The closest addresses 1405 and 1395. So from there, what we'd like to do is install one handhole, run approximately 45 feet under the road, Sammaset Road, to a customer-installed handhole. And this is, you know, the purpose of this construction is to upgrade the underground service that's at 1380 Sammaset Road. And that being said, I'd be more than happy to address any questions if there are any.
So basically, this is to respond to a customer's request to upgrade their electric service.
That is correct, yes.
And it's underground, therefore, we have to do under the road. Okay. Anyone? Any questions from the board? Bob, go ahead.
Just a quick one. Is this going under the road and burying all this? Is this new to that location or is this existing buried cabling?
They have existing overhead, so they'd like to upgrade the service from 100 amp to 200 amp and, you know, maybe even as simple as aesthetic reasons to go underground. And just to make note, I did confirm this would not be cutting of the road, it would be by mowing under the road.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Amy? Nothing? Okay. Do I?
My question was about mowing under the road and not cutting it, so she answered that before I could ask it.
She's clairvoyant. That's okay.
Is this gentleman here for? I don't know. Is that gentleman here for the public hearing?
You here for the public hearing, sir? Do you want anything to say? Okay. Wonderful. All right. Do I hear a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the poll. I don't have the thing in front of me.
Recorder?
To approve the poll change at Sammaset Road as stated in the packet.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll go to a vote. Amy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Glad we could do that. All right. Onto the next item on the agenda administrative is the entertainment license for Brick House. And I think if, have a seat right, you can stand or have a seat. Make sure the green light's on so you can.
Mic check, mic check.
Oh, okay. You're good. Thank you. All right, well, an application for an entertainment license for the Brick House Restaurant. If you want to have anything to say first?
Well, I'm Russell from the Brick House. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak. First, I want to apologize because there's a violation and that was from pure ignorance. What we're trying to achieve is just a little acoustic music, a couple people in the corner, not much louder than we already playing in the restaurant. No one will be standing, listen to the music. It's solely for diners, people who are already dining. So we won't be increasing capacity to allow more people to come into. You know, it's just for diners. On Tuesday nights, I was going to put just Tuesday on there, but then the lady suggested I not limit myself. But just on Tuesday nights, from 4:00 to 6:00, we want to do a little bit of acoustic music off to the corner for diners.
Right. Thank you. One of the questions I have is you have it going to 1:00 AM. I know all days except Wednesdays. I understand that. It gives you some flexibility, but the time to 1:00, you're looking 4:00 to 6:00. What time do you really want us to?
I mean, 4:00 to 6:00. Like I said, I just didn't want to, you know, in the event something happens and let's say we are doing a wedding reception and somebody's playing the ukulele and it goes till midnight. I didn't want to like, how would that work? Do I come back here for a new license? So I just wanted to like open up so I don't like have to, you know what I mean? I don't know how that works, but 4:00 to 6:00 on Tuesdays is kind of what I really want to do.
Jamie?
Yeah. Okay, now that we have a better understanding, thank you for explaining that. That's helpful.
Absolutely.
You know, I think maybe it seems like, you know, offering something that would be through dining hours with the option to go till like a little after, so like till 9:00 or something even, or 10:00. I know in the past, we've recognized 11:00 as the cutoff period.
Okay.
And if you have a specific event, I believe, isn't there an option to come to get a special permit? So like if you have a wedding?
Yeah, they can come for a one day.
Great.
Yeah.
So that way, you're not limited. So if we were to say from 4:00 to 9:00, but then you have a wedding booked and you want that to go till, you know, 11:00 or so that night, you can come in and get one of those permits for those events.
That works great.
That's fine.
Absolutely. That works great for me. Thank you guys very much.
So we'll do till 9:00?
I think so. It's dining.
Do it till 9:00 every day except Wednesday, 4:00 to 9:00.
Are you closed on Wednesday? Is that?
Yeah, we're closed on Wednesday with no plans open in the foreseeable future.
Do you want us to include Wednesday?
Wednesday, just in case you change your day off.
Sure, sure. Sure. That's fine.
So every, so for the entertainment license for acoustic music from 4:00 to 9:00?
Every day.
Every day.
Is it specific to acoustic or is it just?
Acoustic, yes.
Just acoustic, yes.
Is the open mic also going to be acoustic?
Open mic, I was more thinking of like a reading, you know, like somebody come and they, you know, maybe some poetry. I just, I just don't want to come back a lot.
We don't want you to have to come back a lot either.
So I mean, you know.
So just so, just so you understand, if you wanted to do amplified music, then that triggers another level of fire safety. And then we'd have to attach some more rules to it. So I'll, I mean, we can just do a general entertainment license for acoustic and as long as people are sitting in the dining room, you don't have to worry about it. Or if you're going to have, if you're going to go up that level, then we'd have to reduce the occupancy to 100 people while you did that.
Okay, so, all right, for instance, I have one person. She has an electric guitar with a little amp.
Yeah.
It won't exceed my current music. So would that be breaking the rules under what you're saying?
If you have like one person and it's during the dining hours, I would say no. But if you're going to have that person with dancing from like 9:00 to 11:00 and there's no food being served, then it becomes a nightclub and then it triggers the fire code issues.
Okay.
It's not that you couldn't do it, it's just that we'd have different rules for that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's for diners. I mean, there won't be music without food.
Good.
Great.
Right, you want them to have food, yes. That's why you're in business.
That is why I'm in business. I wanted to buy some food hopefully, you know? So, yeah, yeah.
To pay for the music.
Okay, so let's make sure we, Jamie, you want to make a motion, but state it so we make sure we're all on the same page here.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for acoustic music from 4:00 PM until 9:00 PM, seven days a week.
I would absolutely love that. Thank you guys very much.
We have a second. Suzanne, any further discussion? Go to vote. Amy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Yeah.
Bob?
Aye.
Jerry's, yes, so 5-0. Thank you for coming and we got you out a little.
Let's plug, come enjoy live music.
Now, wait a minute. Now, you're going to be, Tuesday night is planned now for 4:00 to 6:00.
Right, from 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay, all right.
Exciting.
Thank you very much.
I also appreciate not amplified music options, so that's great.
And it's just great to have a place open, period.
Right, yes.
Yeah, to be honest, our clientele don't really like the loud, you know what I mean?
Yes, they don't like the loud.
We're often asked to turn the music down in the restaurant.
Yeah.
You know, so it's just to get some foot traffic in there on that specific day, which is our worst day.
Fortunately, we didn't make you wait as long as we did last time, so I'm glad we got through this.
I was hoping to be a little longer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is Select Board Goals.
Oh, boy.
You said, let me, I might've got some hidden here somewhere.
Oh, yeah, those are your old goals.
The old goals, so we look for you.
And then you've got some new draft goals too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we get, were they in a different spot?
Just right here. These are the draft.
The draft on the?
Page 12.
Page 12.
She just pulled out something.
Oh, is that a printout?
That's the, that's your last year's goals with the red is just the update of where we are.
Update where we were is just from a meeting long ago.
Wasn't that long ago?
No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't. But it was a while back. I'm surprised I remembered it. All right. Do you want, Jackie, you want to kind of take us through this a little bit?
Yeah, so like last year, I organized it around the strategic planning goals, which are changing a little bit this year. You'll, you'll see that plan, it will be coming to you very shortly. It's in its final draft and then it has to revolve around to the committees and stuff. So I arranged it that way and then I added, the first piece is the organizational capacity and between levels of government goals that we've had in different forms for the past few years that I think you think are important and I think are important, so I threw those in for your review too. So the first one is, you know, to continue to work on positive and collaborative relationships with neighboring towns and regional capacity. And we've had some success at that, but we're specifically outlining dispatch options for this year, shared behavioral health and nursing outreach programs. We're trying to figure out a way to continue that forward. And Rich and I have not lost hope that we can continue to try alternative or shared staffing between two or more towns, so we're leaving that in until we achieve it. And then I think we had some really good success with number two involving state reps and senators in discussions with state and federal entities. And coming up, we have the Route 6 plan that needs DOT approval. We are currently in a land exchange with the National Park Service for area, a little bit of area next to the salt pond landing for, and we have taken Nossette Light Beach Road, so we're going to give them some land off of Nossette Road in exchange, with a couple of Orenol Pools in it, in exchange for those two parcels. And then we also need very, we need to work very cooperatively with them for our wastewater goals if we want to continue the permeable reactive barriers. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of talking around our, both our stormwater project around salt pond and the permeable reactive barrier project around wastewater. So those are those two that I put in. And then for the strategic planning goals, obviously wastewater and clean water solutions is sort of at the top of the mind for this year. And I identified some, I started to drill down and maybe I've drilled down too much. Let me know, but I thought, you know, we need to finalize the collection system and get our 30% cost estimate so that we're ready to create a plan, create the preliminary budget and funding plan, and that would come to you hopefully right around the time of the budget being presented. I want to create and finalize an outreach plan and begin education and outreach. Rich has some great ideas for that and Kayla's going to be doing, we're going to be doing some educational materials out, but we'd also like to have some meetings, workshops where people can ask questions. And then, of course, town meeting for funding.
Those make sense.
So can we, are we ready for questions?
Yeah, questions you can add, you can delete, you can tell me.
Well, first of all, when is the target date for the approval of a Route 6 plan by DOT? Do we have any?
We do not. DOT has not, has not wanted to meet with us. And Jim has tried. So our consultant is actively trying and they respond back. It's just getting their team together is, it's roughly seven people that they have to pull together for a meeting and so it's just been someone can't make it or so. We've been working on it now since July.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, when you put it that way, trying to get seven people plus together.
But we're willing to go to them and everything.
Oh, well, yeah.
So I'll push him on it, but he has been pretty, every two weeks or so, he sends a reminder, asks for.
I don't know if this belongs in this plan. You guys can shoot me down on this and that's fine, but I know we talked about at some point getting a budget from the school, from the education side of the aisle, much sooner than in prior years. Isn't that a reasonable goal?
It is and it is a reasonable goal that they have agreed to and we are putting it in the new school agreement, but they're also making promises to us. And I can't remember what the schedule is, but at some time in late January, they'd have their preliminary and then they'd have the, you know, just like our budget, six weeks later, they'll have the first, you know, draft and then after that, they have the final budget.
Do we have any way of targeting a percent increase on property tax based upon the things that we know today?
No.
Okay, so for example, do we expect a COLA increase on the education side? Do we expect a certain?
Well, of course, because we have union contracts in place.
That's my point, is that do we, what's already out there that, I think the town is sensitive to the, to the ever-increasing property taxes. And I'm trying to figure out, should we have something in our goals to mitigate that?
Sure. I just don't know if honing in on the school is the way to do it because generally speaking, for instance, if we have COLA raises and we are saying that they should be around 2.5% in terms of what the budget should go up every year, 2.5% or 3%, which is not realistic because ours goes up more than that. But anyway, say we say 3%, then we'd ask them to, obviously, they can't adjust the COLA, but they can adjust other things. So that would be the result.
Right. I know the, just one more question. There was a great recap, it might have been done by Rich, on what was the components of the whole tax increase. That's why I thought we might have some way of abusing those variables and trying to estimate what we would project for this year. We have some kind of a pro forma process where we do that because I would like to see numbers as soon as we know anything.
Well, the Select Board traditionally has provided some sort of budget message, which has been pretty consistent for the last several years, so it hasn't changed much, just basically keep costs down. And the process has been run primarily through the Finance Committee. So, you know, we have a pretty thorough process. As a matter of fact, next month, we'll be presenting the draft of the capital plan, which will have some, perhaps some borrowing associated. Well, definitely we'll have some borrowing related to wastewater, how we're raising funds, whether free cash or otherwise, to fund different projects that are going on. And then the following month in December, we get a draft of the operating budget. You can update with a presentation on January 1st and it's all follows kind of a prescribed format. So you're right, and the timelines, I think I distributed it out in a previous packet and it's been sent to the Finance Committee, is a budget timeline of various things that have been happening. So one of the first things that happens right after Labor Day, for example, is every department gets a salary projection, which is their current level of staffing and what all their employees are going to be based on their step and grade or their collective bargaining agreement with where they're going to be placed as far as pay. So all that stuff is known and that's all leading up to a budget presentation in the beginning of January.
I appreciate that, Rich, and I can't, I can't say that I know the process because I've never been through it with you folks, but I, I'm just wondering, how do we weave that into our goals? Something about, you know, managing the ever-increasing?
Well, I guess I started.
Burden on our residents.
Started to suggest was that the annual budget message kind of provides your opportunity. I don't know if it needs to be a goal separate from that, but you know, every, each Select Board each year can provide us with the direction on the budget and we follow that direction. So the direction the last several years has been level services, keep the same level of services, but provide for, you know, collective bargaining increases.
Right, there are contracts we have to honor.
Right.
I'm with you. I'm just trying to make sure we are, that's top of mind.
We communicate those to, we communicate those to the school at the same time. But really, the challenge, as I, you know, indicated in the memo, was the extra special education and assessment shift due to enrollments.
Right.
We could have, we could have zero budget increases, but if we have a higher participation in the school district, our share goes up and of course, bringing on of new projects with debt service, so.
So that was what got us last year. It wasn't that the school budget increased dramatically, it was that our portion of it increased dramatically. And unfortunately, when our portion increases with the operations budget, it also increases with the capital budget.
Yeah. Everything goes up by students.
Everything goes up.
I could see, I mean, I saw that, it was a great summary.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make, so if we held things constant, we could actually project that number now. Maybe we could be managing to those components.
Well, I think that you don't want to give a false read either, right? Like you can project a number assuming that things don't change, but then when things change, now that number becomes a false number and you've kind of, you know, people will latch on to any number you put out there, right? And so by putting something out there without really knowing if the attendance goes up or if there's a special need situation could be, I think, problematic. But I was actually going to say something that ties into, I think, the heart of what you're getting at maybe with the increasing property tax. Historically, the board has, you know, had its eye on the concept of various tools to help residents with increased cost of living, including especially property tax given the last, like, you know, four or five years, what the trends we've seen. And one thing that I don't, I don't, maybe I'm just missing it, but for instance, the community fund and various programs like that, like those all weave into the fact that aside from where the property tax, taxes go in the next couple of years, in addition to trying to like mitigate unnecessary expenses in the budget, there's multiple prongs and one of those other prongs is programs that the town offers or tools that we create to offset the impact on residents for increased tax bills.
So actions and strategies to mitigate the burden of increased tax rates?
Tax rate, yeah.
No, that's excellent. I did not get that.
Right, and I think that that gets at that.
Way of describing it and yes, that's exactly what I'm trying to do. Make sure we're keeping our eye on that.
Yeah, and we, and like we always come to it from the concept of tools, right? Like what more tool, what tools do we have in the tool chest right now and how do we get those services to, you know, the increasing number of people in the community who need it? Because now it's not just people who income qualify, now it's kind of across the board we're seeing issues, which is why, you know, Rich and the board did all that work for the community fund so that we can expand, we can access the support.
That's a great, I mean, the whole concept is fantastic as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure that we have this yellow sticky on our forehead as we go through all of these months of planning and.
Absolutely.
No, you're, you're right. And Bob, when I go through the draft goals, I'm so over-focused on the projects that, you know, I'm always missing something. So this really. Think that we can fit the community fund, the new tax aid programs and any new abatements or.
One of the things, Bob, when we did the preliminary budget, it had a, for want of a better term, a plug figure for the schools that looked at a 2.5% or so increase and it came in significantly higher than that, which is why we had the override looking at it.
But it wasn't because, I think this is what gets confusing for climate.
It was because of the increase in students compared to other towns.
The percentage of the budget.
Percentage that we have to cover.
Yeah, totally. I mean, I.
And that was both in Cape Cod Tech and Nossette Regional.
Yeah.
So, and I, a question for you that I have, Rich, and/or Jackie. Okay, the student number that the state uses is October 1, 2024. When will we, do we get the percent? So at some point soon, the schools should know what percentage Eastham has versus Orleans versus Brewster and so forth, that we could get that earlier than when we don't.
We'll definitely have it by January, but usually what they're telling us, and there is a formula, so it goes from the school to Desi in Boston and then they have their pixie dust formula that they use and then it comes back to us. But even the raw numbers should be able to tell us something.
Right, well, because the raw number will tell us the percentage that we owe on the debt service. And even if they use the statutory thing, whatever money over the statutory is the percentage that we, we, Eastham would have to pay versus other towns, it might be, I mean, what did we went from, 19 to 22 or something like that last time? Something like that? And that's 3%, you know, it'd be interesting to see, to see what that number looks like, whatever the statutory. And the sooner we have it, we might be able to tell people, we're looking, we're going to be looking at another hit or maybe we'll be a little bit better than the next year from last year.
And again, that's usually what Rich does on the first Monday in January when we present the budget. It really is the sort of the.
Oh, I think Amy has a, I don't know.
Oh, sorry, Amy.
I don't know how long she's been like that.
Go ahead.
No, I was, I was going to say, I know last year, we had the big increase with special need students and, you know, increased student numbers at the region, but had we talked about the fact that we didn't override and not just, you know, a debt exclusion or something short-term? We didn't override and then if those numbers come down next year, maybe put that money into some sort of stabilization fund for the schools so that when we have these big jumps, we don't feel them as, we have a buffer.
That's a really good idea.
And these are things that we talk about. And these are things that we talk about with the Finance Committee every month. We've got a schedule with the Finance Committee of things we cover every month, as well as things that come up, and this is one of the things that come up. So over the summer, for example, we have a meeting, it's prescribed every year over the summer where we review financial policies. And so we already have briefed the Finance Committee on potential policy recommendation to the board when we talk about the budget in January for exactly what Amy just said. If the same amount of money isn't needed for the special education students, the special education budget drops this year in their budget to steward those funds and put them in a stabilization fund, and we might contribute other funds as well to a stabilization fund to help mitigate against these types of one-time things in the future.
That's a, I think that's a very important, you know, process that we should be looking at and following.
So I guess I would suggest.
Put that on your.
Can we put that on our goal list?
The gate burden of increased taxes list, yeah.
Yeah.
Suzanne, I think you wanted.
Really is important, I think. I just think helping to, you know, buffer that is really important. So I, I think that should be on there.
We want to try and smooth it out. Suzanne.
So we're on the schools, and I guess we're going to add the stabilization fund, special education stabilization fund to 25, to goals. And then I, because I work in Brewster and I hear them talk about these things, and there's a desire for the schools to do some forecasting. And I don't quite remember if that was something that was like, going to make it into the agreement, or if that was just like, hey, it'd be really nice if you did like, some forecasting for what you think enrollment might be. And I don't really know where they like, landed on that, or.
I don't mean to be defending the schools tonight, but I don't, it is not really possible for them to forecast number of students, like, but generally speaking, we just completed, before we started the high school project, we completed an assessment of what the population of the high school should be over the course of the next 20 years. And I know that in the feasibility study that we're looking at with the elementary and middle schools, that will be something that we will be doing as a part of that. I mean, we're paying for that. It's not the school, but, but it's something that we want. I don't know if they'll be able to do financial forecasting in the way that you would want them to. I think they certainly could do capital.
I, yeah, I think capital would be nice. I don't necessarily expect it. Enrollment, I think, would be nice, but maybe don't expect it, but.
Well, they move between towns is the problem.
But do we think that the school consolidation study will be completed in 25, in FY '25?
I think so, yes.
I mean, I'm kind of into putting things on a list that we think will get done. Do we want to, because it kind of goes under the, continue to work and develop positive collaborative relationships with neighboring towns, but it also hits.
Well, definitely it goes into that one, I hope.
But it also hits the, looking at the future of the schools, I guess.
What, one thing for you, one of the things that the, the school committee actually put in their draft for the new agreement, and probably the cause of them looking to do a new agreement, and something that we, I think the towns are agreed to, is a three-year rolling average on the number of students, so that if we have a big jump this year, it doesn't hit us totally. It, you know, you take the three-year average, and then so if it goes down, you won't go down as much, but you, you won't have that such large swings to try and smooth it out over, over three years on, on the number of students so that the towns, any town, not just Eastham, doesn't get hit with a huge increase.
Are we doing, are we actively pursuing this?
Oh, yes. It's actually in, in agreement. Now, it will, it's my view, my understanding, Jackie, you can correct me, that there's no way it'll be ready for this town, town meeting, but we'll be ready for the town meeting in 2026.
But the reason we opened up, or the reason we, the school committee opened up the regional agreement is a specific request from Eastham, Brewster, Orleans, and Wellfleet to switch to a rolling average, so that we could predict our budgets better.
Yeah. Too much for whip saw.
Well, in, in, just, I didn't mean to pick on the schools. It was just an example. But, you know, what I was hoping is we would have, before we get to a budget process, we'd have some type of a plan. You know, we'd look at things compared to last year, and then we would be tracking variances, either monthly or at least quarterly, on some kind of a quarterly business review, to make sure we know where we are relative to our plan. And it's okay, I mean, things happen, to be under, to be over, on certain areas, line items. Things happen. We just don't necessarily know it, but we're, we want to be on top of that thing all year.
The approved budget becomes our plan, and we do indeed track that.
I was trying to do something before that. How would we, what would we?
Future.
What would we expect the planned budget to be, and where are the bogies?
Okay. You're going to find that out in January and not before. Constantly.
At a minimum, we do quarterly updates to the Finance Committee on revenue projections and appropriate, and status of appropriations.
And they are televised. They are.
Every October meeting is a prior fiscal year, year-on-year review, and that just happened last week.
Gotcha.
To do exactly what was the budget plan and what were the variances to budget for the whole fiscal year. And we did reasonably time it that way, is that's the lead-in to the effort.
For the budget, okay. Well, that's what, that's what I was.
All these things you're talking about happen, you just, you know.
You just, they don't happen at the Select Board level.
Every town's a little bit different.
Gotcha.
In our case, we've been doing this through the Finance Committee, and.
So can we get.
We've got a representative from the Select Board and the Finance Committee, but perhaps I could do a better job of just disseminating interest, information to everybody who's interested.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to know without, and this is, I don't want to have to sit through all those Finance Committee meetings to know what the status is of where we are against plan.
We have lots of great information. I'll send it out to us whole board, because you ought to see the prior year fiscal year review. Do you have any specific questions?
This is, mic not on? Is the mic not on?
Happy to sit with people and explain some of the finer points of it. But what you just asked about, it absolutely happens, so.
Thanks.
We could just have Mira to send out the Finance Committee agenda with the accompanying materials to you or to all of you if you want.
Yeah.
I mean, that's simple enough.
Yeah.
We could then ask.
It goes out in an email.
Intelligent questions rather than interrupt and take the meeting offline.
Yeah, I would take, I would appreciate it.
I don't think so. I think this was an extremely good goal that I didn't think of because it's not, you know, where my head is at right now, but that you, we should have, definitely.
So Rich, I knew, I should have known you, this was something you were.
Absolutely.
All over already.
Well, we do, I think, like, think we do a pretty thorough job. Maybe sometimes we don't do as good a job as we could communicating to everybody, but getting the information out there, making sure everybody understands it is, you know, probably the hardest challenge. But we do a pretty thorough job on everything we do. And, and a follow-up I was going to say from that.
That's okay.
But if you were to sit through.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
If you were to sit through Finance Committee meetings or budget meetings come budget time, would be good ones.
Absolutely. So we'll have a schedule of what department and what division and.
A good point. That was part of what I was going to say. So we do have, actually, back from the summer, a defined schedule of the whole budget process with a series of Finance Committee meetings where the departments actually come into the Finance Committee, present their budget, answer questions, specific questions, usually around staffing and things like that. I guess the other thing I was going to say is the challenge, what I've, you know, worked in other towns, you know, what's tough on, to bring this back to goal setting. It's not uncommon to have financial goals, but what I've found in, you know, some towns from time to time, is they set these arbitrary goals that you're just not going to meet. Like, keep the budget within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. Okay, well, what does that mean if you bring on debt service of a million and a half dollars in one year because you build a new school or a wastewater treatment plant? Obviously, you're going to go over the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. Does that mean you have to cut the operating budget a million and a half when many of those costs are fixed? So the only way to possibly make that, meet that goal is to eviscerate services. And nobody really wants to do that either. So, you know, having realistic financial goals in that respect is important.
Would it be helpful to, I mean, I don't want to necessarily overcomplicate our goals list, but in the development of the wastewater and clean water solutions, you have been very mindful of, like, grant, grant funding, state funding, and is that too vague to add in?
Oh, I mean, to look at.
That's the create preliminary budget and funding plan, including, you want to put including grant funding sources?
Yeah, for, if, in the event that the public looks at this document, yeah, I think it's important to know that, I think it's important that people know that the town is very aware of the cost that this will have to the town, but that we won't necessarily need to carry the full thing on our own. And just like, having it sprinkled in as a reminder, I think, would be useful. Yeah, Amy.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing we can.
Really falls under the outreach.
Yes.
In that, you know, we can work with environmental partners, because as they go through permitting, they, they sort of unlock all these avenues to grants and, you know, USDA money and different things. And so I think part of our outreach will really be to cover those. And, and they can help us say what's available and what, you know, we're, we're eligible for.
Yes. And we, you know, we pretty much, with wastewater, we, we've investigated that. So we kind of know going into it, and we just need to know what our numbers are so that we can then estimate what incentives we're going to get from other sources. But we could put a grant, I mean, we could put a grant goal in your goals. We don't ever do that, but I, I would say that that would be a really easy one for us because we do really well. I mean, last year it was over $4 million, so I'm happy to put it in if you want us to.
Isn't that our friend Shayna?
Partially. Shayna has done very, very well. Paul Lag's done very, very well.
Yeah.
Well, you even have grants from fire and police.
Fire, police, DPW, recycling, we get all kinds of little grants, and then Dorothy at the COA. So there's, every division does. But we also got a lot of forgivable loans from the. Loan forgiveness from the SRF for our water project last year, so that really pushed us over the edge.
Those, all those revenue sources or whatever, or reduced expenses, I mean, those are.
They really help.
Well, that's a, that's a thing that people don't realize. I mean, it's, it's an admirable goal, but it's also a given. Like, for example, we have a new cost coming onboard in the next year's budget for body cameras for the police department. Well, our chief has already applied for the grant funding for it, and if he get the grant, the cost of that's covered for the next five years. Or if he doesn't, it's not. You know, so, you know, you don't know the costs that you're being, that you're foregoing because of some of these grants. And so, you know, part of that is me putting it in our budget documents so people recognize it.
And you'll see it in the capital budget line.
It might be interesting to, looking at the outreach program, to actually discuss the grants we've received so that citizens will know what the town has done, what your staff has done and so forth to reduce, reduce costs. I mean, I think we have to show, we have to do things to try and control the taxes, but it's also shown here some things we're already doing on it, and just so we.
Yeah, definitely.
You have, when you have a, a void, it gets filled with questions and maybe incorrect information, and it just.
Rumors.
Rumors. I was going to say conspiracies, but rumors is a better term.
I, I, I'm all for anything we can do to highlight the wins that we're getting monetarily, whether they're grants, whether they're, you know, different changes in the budget from last year in a variance that's in our favor, whatever. And then trying to communicate that and make sure people are aware of that, because I just think it's a very sensitive subject. People, you know, I'm new to the Select Board. People always ask me, what's going to happen with our taxes next year? And it's, it's, it's just.
Constant.
Yeah.
You're not the only one that gets asked that.
Right. And so I, I just think, in top of mind to me, if we're doing goals, there's got to be something in there that's relevant to that.
And I think it, it is, taxes are directly related to our services and the infrastructure goals that we have. If people would like to abandon the infrastructure goals, then we can assure them that their taxes won't go up as much. But it's just putting that off, and that's not responsible for us to recommend to you guys, so we don't. So I think that's, that's where we're at. It's, you know, it's painful, and we're trying to mitigate that pain, but I am also a taxpayer. I am paying taxes too. And I understand, but a town of 6,000 residents does not approve a $130 million water system that borrows $20 million a year every 18 months for eight years without having some pain points. And we have to pay for that plus anything that is new. And we had a global pandemic in the middle of it, which has totally changed the landscape for all of us. And I think that's why people are even more sensitive to it because of the inflationary pressures that the world has had. But we're experiencing those same inflationary pressures. And we're really trying to, rather than say, we want your taxes to go down, which is not honest or realistic. We may want that, but that's not going to happen. I think what, what the message from us is, in general, is we're doing everything possible to minimize the increases and still achieve these huge infrastructure goals that we need to achieve. And it's, it's that we're, we are doing grants. We are saving all of our short-term rental tax money. I mean, we're, we're hopefully going into wastewater with 50% paid for. I don't know how to do better than that. So I think there's, yeah.
All agreeing with you, just keeping it top of mind on our goal sheet.
No, and I don't, I, I think what Rich is saying is true. We are just going about our normal business every day, and so failing to communicate some of this is true. But I also just, just think it's difficult. I just had a, a conversation today with our assessing department, and they are taking it right on the nose. They have nothing to do with the budget. They are only, you know, assessing property, and, and yet, you know, they get the full brunt of it. And I was apologizing to them for that because I think really, you know, people should be yelling at me, not the, the town assessor.
You're, you're, you're nice when I talk to her. I said, yeah, it is all your fault.
But, you know, I think it, it, we understand. Everyone who works here understands, and, you know, some of us are taxpayers too, so we get it. We've gotten the bills. We see the increase. We see the increase every year, and it is difficult. I just don't want to overpromise something to people. I want to be honest. And I think ultimately, it's better if, if they hear the honesty and they vote against something, or they, you know, get mad now and know it, than to be in any way fed that the situation is not as serious as it is, you know, so.
I, I think so often, at least when I was on the Finance Committee, where so often in town meetings, that people voted in favor of something and didn't think, you know, eventually you're going to have to pay for this.
And it doesn't just happen that next year.
It doesn't happen, that's right. Like the school, for example, we, you didn't get hit with that bond until now. So those kinds of things are things that when we were in the Finance Committee, we wanted to try and put down, if you vote for this, this is kind of the, what the impact will be on the taxes, and that's all part of communication, and it's likely, you know, we had a 14% increase, and we knew it when we voted on it, and we need to make, we communicate the steps to them. And I think that's a good, you know, I know you've got it in there, and Kayla's working on it, and that is important.
One, one thing is that I feel like once you see town departments talk about their budgets, and if you go through the process, it's like line by line, and it is a multi-year projection. They do capital plans. Rich works on the budget all, all year. It's not. It's not, we say there's a budget season, but it's really all year.
He's halfway through it now.
He's halfway through it now. And then by the time like the one closes, you're doing the next one. And I, I understand that people don't necessarily want to like watch all the finance committee meetings. But it is, I could imagine is a little disheartening because the staff work so hard to like provide good service with what they have. And when you look at the rationale for what they would like to purchase, they're like, well, this thing is busted and it's, and we've had it since the eighties. And.
And I think, I guess the finance committee thing, I, I understand. I go to a lot of meetings and I have to watch a lot of meetings and it's, it's, yes, tiring. But the system that we have is really good. You can go right into the meeting that you want. You can look at the agenda items and you can go to where that's being discussed. So if you just want, for instance, to tune into Rich's year-end review of the finance committee, that took like, I want to say 30 to 40 minutes. And you could just do that and then leave the meeting. And same thing for when we start going into budget, actually presentation of the budget. He'll go through it with you, then he'll go through it much more deeply with the finance committee. And then you can also pick and choose any departments that you have concerns about, like the schools or DPW or, and so we'll get that scheduled to you so that you guys are more prepared. And actually, if we talk about it with you, then the public will be more prepared. So it's all good. I think it's all good. I think we should be talking about it.
I think if we talk about it and we, we look at it on a regular basis, we're going to be armed with the information to answer the people come up with those kind of questions.
Yeah.
And that's really what I'm just trying to request here, that we have this as part of our ongoing, you know, operating rhythm, if you will, for the, for this kind of a meeting is that we look at things that could possibly negatively and positively impact what happened last year.
The, the library roof.
Oh, I know.
Light, light roof.
I know, I know.
The roof.
You never know. I mean.
You never know.
You don't, you don't have any idea. Well, the pipes bursting in the elementary school.
I had, I was a GM.
We have great insurance for that.
I know we did.
We had floods in our, in our computer room. We had tenant above us completely nuke our systems. I mean, and it happened. Things happen.
Those things happen, absolutely.
So I'm not saying that they don't happen. I'm saying we, we're on top of it. We know what the, we know why it happened. We know how much it cost. We know what it was going to do to our budget relative to what our plan was. And we knew all those things every time something happened, positively or negatively.
All right. Anything else on the, on the, on the goals as we?
Wait a minute, I'm going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate. I'm gonna, we're going back. We're going to add cooperation. We're going to add the regional elementary school feasibility, capital study, whatever it's called. I can't remember what it's called, but I'll add that. We're going to add action strategies to mitigate the burden of increased taxes. And we've got, I've got five things in that list already.
So that's really a great thing that we can take forward to the junk, junk you public.
A little off our goals, how are you and Jamie and Rich doing on the community fund stuff?
We've met and gone over, actually, I was gonna approach you guys after the meeting and try to get a follow-up. I've got some stuff to show you.
That's great.
He's ready. He's on it right now.
I'm pleased. Anything else on the goals?
Were we?
I think that was good.
On these goals or all of them? It sounded like Jackie was like going through them line by line.
It kind of was, but it's, it doesn't, we don't have to.
Go ahead.
Jackie took a breath and I jumped in.
Jerry wants to move on.
No, no, that's, I, listen, I, I can't beat, beat the 14-minute meeting so long.
So we, I'm sorry. So we have our programs and strategies for new year-round housing units, which I know is important. And I've tried to make those as specific as possible. So we get both of our pilot programs that you were excited about in. And we figured out a way to finish the design plans for Beach Plum and move forward with the thrift shop. The taking of Salt Pond condos is going to be problematic, but that's another, that's another meeting. And then Jamie, I did add the continue to work on strategies to encourage workforce housing and opportunities for residents to enter the housing market. Because I don't want, even though we, we can't do that at this moment, I want that to be on the. And then the master plan goals are just one, one intersection, our Route Six conceptual plan, consolidating community-based human services. Rich and I have a lot of ideas about that, but we're, we're trying to figure out how we consolidate under a department some of those things because it's still, they're still drifting around in various and sundry departments. So we need to pull them all together and it'll be much easier for residents and for staff and for everyone to identify what the list of services that we're doing that are open and available to residents for human services-based programs. And then the new, there is a new goal on the strategic plan that is to promote excellence in town services. So I put our technology goals under that because I think, you know, Rich and the tech team have done a fantastic job getting us from where we were to a stable network with a lot of good stuff happening. And now we just have things that we need to build on that. And then communication. I added the communication goals in there.
Can I ask a question about infrastructure?
Yeah.
The, I forget. We had mentioned doing the section from doing complete streets from.
Yeah, we took it off the plan because we can't afford it.
Yeah. And so that whole.
Yeah. That was the only thing. We've given up that. We've given up some of the intersection improvements. Basically, we've tried to move forward with as much as we could, but the Sammaset Road Complete Streets project was two and a half million dollars.
And that intersection where, was it Bridge? Is that the intersection on, on not Sammaset on, um, hello, Herringbrook?
Herringbrook Bridge.
They did that like slight adjustment and that seems to be working really well.
That's why we decided, why spend $325,000?
I was glad that was gone. I was like, oh, that's not there. Okay.
I kind of made that decision. I'm sorry.
It's working great.
Because we thought as long as we can make it safe and not. Yeah. And it's something that in the future we can go back to. It's just, we can't do everything at once. And I think that.
Are the neighbors okay with that or?
Not really. I mean, they would prefer to have it. But the, we do have a dangerous intersection at Bridge. And I always forget the name of the road, but right before the bridge, coming from Orleans, right before the bridge.
Did you?
It's not Dire Princes.
Boat Meadow.
Boat Meadow.
Boat Meadow, yeah.
By Boat Meadow. That is a very problematic intersection and we have many near misses. So that is the one that's being prioritized for fiscal year '25.
And per our.
People have asked about that for years, so.
Our conversation about finances and what does the town do to like keep taxes under control? It's really hard to like, be like, well, we chose not to do stuff.
I know.
We chose not to do stuff and it's not as obvious that we chose not to do it. But then when you have residents be like, well, what do you mean? You're not kind of like trying to improve like bike and pedestrian safety between the bike path and the library? You're like, okay, well, but, but it costs money. All of these things cost money and we can't do all of it. And we don't do all of it, so we have prioritized it.
And what, I think what Rich and I and staff really try to do is think through, what are the implications? I mean, you know, and, and I go back in time, but when we were saving for water and, and, you know, the prior town manager saw that the big, big water was coming and taxes were coming, we stopped improving our buildings for almost 10 years. So when I came on, we had this backlog of.
Deferred maintenance.
Deferred maintenance. And so we've been sort of trying to chip away at that. Now, Rich, right now, has a great capital plan that we just went over today and we're making strides. But all that deferred maintenance is not, is not money-saving in, in the long run. So it's like you have to, we kind of go, have to discuss all these things and say, what's, what's extra versus, or what can wait versus what really shouldn't wait, you know, so.
This is a common thing and I'll just take this opportunity to add this in here. But it goes to things we'll be talking about in the coming months with the budget. And it's both on the operating budget and the capital budget. Maintaining a long-term perspective versus a short-term perspective. Deferred maintenance is a short-term perspective. That if you had kept up with it over the long term, the facilities, the operations, services would be better at a lower cost over time.
Yeah.
And most commonly, towns, when they think they have a budget crunch, will cut out things that cost them in the long run. And then everybody gets pissed. You know, three, four, five years down the road because why'd you ever let that happen? Why does it cost X millions of dollars when it could have, you know, we could have just fixed it for that?
Both Rich and I have worked for towns that will remain unnamed, but that they, they would do these things. So you'd be in the middle of a, a five-year plan. You'd be in year two of a five-year plan and they decide to cancel year three. So, you know, it's like you're never, you're never getting anywhere because you're always making those penny wise and pound foolish choices.
We don't have the cheapest budget, I would say, you know, and I'm talking generically here. But we have a very responsible budget that provides for the long-term health and wellbeing of the community without minimizing the amount of impacts of spiking up or down as best we can. And so I think, you know, you'll start to see that as you go through the different processes and see the different things we do. Jerry, Amy has her.
Sorry.
Poor Amy's been so patient.
Amy, Amy, yes, you just raised your hand, I think.
I'm, I'm so happy Rich said that about, you know, we have very responsible budget and plan. And, and, you know, if we, if we do put things off, I don't think we're compromising safety when we do it. Just like the Herringbrook Bridge thing. The quick, there was a quick solution to put stop signs there and it's working. It's making it safer. Maybe down the road, when we have access to more money, we'll do some improvements there.
Yep.
And I think the same thing could happen at Boat Meadow. Why not just put, it's a three-way stop. You know, that's a really easy solution for little money. And yeah, it's not perfect, but it's going to make it safer. And then some point down the line, when we have access to more money, you know, through complete streets, whatever, then we can redesign the intersections. But yeah, to redesign something and, and throw a lot of money into it, when stop signs can be a, a really good short-term solution. Okay, people have to stop a little more. Oh, well, you know, get over it. They'll, they'll be okay.
But we have to look at that intersection anyway because of drainage. Yeah, because it's a low-lying road and this, so I want to do, what we've been sort of doing is doing the plans and saving the plans because it's the construction that is the expensive part. But if they're already ready to go, it's a lot faster if we do have money. So we're moving forward with the plan on that. And then Jim, we'll, we'll bring it to you and you can discuss with Jim and see what you want to do with it.
All right. Well, Amy, for example, then Bridge Road, Herringbrook Road, I don't think the town knows how much we saved doing, doing that.
They do now.
$325,000.
$325,000 saved by putting up three stop, no, two more stop signs.
And it is inconvenient for those who don't think that normally they would have to stop. But anytime we stop traffic and start it again, I think it makes people more mindful as they're driving. And that is a very dangerous road because we have pedestrians and bikes and a narrow road and a lot of people driving on that road, especially now that we have great GPS that tells us we can take that road. It used to be a secret.
Yes, no.
Final piece to all this for me, anyway. Our capital, our capital plan is a, I wouldn't say unique, but one of the benefits of our capital plan and one form of function, everything in this town is presented on that plan. Most towns' capital, five-year capital plans have just the things that are going to happen in the next five years or they want to have happen in the next five years. Local roads, intersections, Route Six, Tea Time, Town Center Plaza. Every single building and facility in town is on our capital plan and scheduled out for something or not. And when we get to a point where too much convenes all at the same time, we, we program it and we forecast it and say, well, maybe we can't do this piece here and we got to push that out a year or two so that we're only taking on the amount that we can finance with our free cash or the things that we need to issue a bond for so that we can match up debt service with debt that's dropping off and replacing it with new debt for the new projects. So there's a lot of thought that goes into it and everything is presented. And I think there's a real solid, strong point for our community to understand that when you're approving capital budget items, you're doing it with the full knowledge of everything else that we have forecast down the road, not just the things that we can think of right now.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on the?
And if you have anything else as you think about it, just.
Let you know.
Email me, yeah.
All right.
I think this is pretty, pretty.
Well, it was.
I don't want to say aggressive, but.
Well, I think it was a, it was a good discussion.
A little nauseous.
A good discussion tonight that, and if people look at this, they're going to see we're thinking on it. And it, and it, the town staff is, is as well. We're not just throwing, saying, oh, let's do this and just raise taxes. We're not doing that. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the appointment of James Do, Daw, James Daw to the recycling committee.
So I, I.
You're the person, Amy, yep.
Yep, I interviewed Mr. Daw, I guess it was last week. And very qualified. He has some history in strategic planning. And I really think he'll be an asset to the committee. So I will make a motion to appoint James Daw to the recycling committee. It's a partial term, ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Second.
Second, second.
I second it.
Second.
Second it, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, no, can't do that, sorry. Amy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jerry's yes. Okay, that's done. We want to accept his resignation, just not on here, but.
Oh.
It was, we postponed it, we postponed it, yeah.
Okay, so I'll have to bring it to the next.
The next one, okay. We'll bring that, we'll bring the Tom McNamara's resignation letter on the next agenda and handle that. That is a, eventually it's a finance committee appointment.
Okay.
All right. Next is the town manager's report.
I didn't, it will be on the website. I didn't get it out in the packet. But I just wanted to let you know, the job fair Wednesday, last Wednesday night at the library went extremely well. A lot of the people who had already applied for jobs came and got to meet department heads and whatever. So that was awesome. But it was very well attended and, you know, staff stayed late to do it. And so it was a really good event. Lori Barr, our HR director, did a fabulous job with it. And we do have applications for all the open positions right now. We don't, some more than others, but we do have applications, which is good. We're going into flu clinics, flu clinic season. So the first is tomorrow, Wednesday. It's Wednesday from 1:00 to 4:00. I don't know if there are any spots still open, but definitely try. And then we have one at the elementary school on November 12th and at the high school on November 13th. So if you're a parent of a, of a child, you can go to either one of those clinics as well.
Where's the November 12th one, Jackie?
What? The other one is November, it's November 12th and then November 13th at the high school.
They're both at the high school?
No.
No, one is elementary school, November 12th, 2:30 to 5:30. It's after school. And then the high school is from 1:00 to 5:00. It's a longer day.
Is the flu, is the flu and COVID?
I believe so, yeah. I should have asked Hillary that question though, but usually they.
Watch out for the next COVID shot. That's all I can say.
I got it.
Oh, I had, I was down.
It hits you?
Badly.
It, it, it's weird how some people.
My wife and I were just out cold for 24 hours.
I hear you, Bob.
The housing update that went out via Flash and Facebook. commented on it on Facebook, but we've started to receive some feedback, and, um, two households that want to rent their home have already contacted us, so it, it's, it's working. And then I, I presented on the municipal panel for the Housing Assistance Corporations Housing to Protect Cape Cod Summit, um, last Thursday, and it was a great event, very well-attended. So you might see, there was a little bit of press on that. And then Halloween on the Green, Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from three to five. I encourage people just to come, I mean, adult people, because it's really great to see all the kids in one place with all their costumes, and it's really, it's a great event. It's definitely, um, very uplifting. As, you know, I age on, I, I enjoy seeing children that I don't have to take care of.
And if, if you show up, they may grab you to be a judge.
It's awesome, it really is.
That was fun. We, we had a, we had a great, Jamie and I had a great time. Sadly, I'll be out of town.
So we're, we're, we're dressing up, we, the town, uh, town staff has various tables, we're dressing up, we're doing it, and I got the COA to do it this year, um, their board is participating, and the friends of the COA are participating, so. It's getting, there are three other, um, Halloween events on that same day, which is very upsetting to our rec program, but it's just.
Was, I saw them on social media, and I was like, hmm, hmm, hmm.
Well, if people, I think if people are smart, they'll just take their kids from one event to the other.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm happy to see it because we don't have super like trick-or-treatable neighborhoods.
I know.
And it's really great to see rec programs in various towns doing.
Oh my gosh, and some of the costumes are amazing.
They're so good.
They really are.
I was like, wait, can we get this done by then? I just realized that, I was like, shoot.
Really amazing.
Yeah, all right.
All right, so that's it.
Show up.
Thank you. Any newer upcoming items from the board?
Remind people that early voting has begun.
Oh, yes.
It's been really busy.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, it's a presidential election, you're gonna have it, and that.
I'm still getting used to the early voting concept.
Are you?
And it's two weeks of it.
Yeah, that's early voting.
And the mail-ins.
I did the ma, I did the mail-in, well, when I lived in Vir, when I lived in Virginia, when I had to commute, I could never be, I could never vote in the time that it was open. So I all, in Virginia, it wasn't anybody could do, you had to have an excuse, but commuting was one of the excuses. So I haven't voted in a regular.
It's fun to vote.
It is fun to go, go vote, and that, but.
I mean, it's not like we ever have long lines here in Eastham.
We don't have long lines.
Although we might, this, like, who knows?
You never know. Never know. I, I think I was talking to the staff, I think, uh, last Wednesday, they already had four hundred and eighty mail-in ballots already at that time. All right, uh, any other business? Oh, minutes, excuse me. Next is minutes, the minutes for September twenty-third.
I have one thing, or do you want a motion first?
Yeah, well, let's do a motion first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty-third.
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion, Jamie?
Uh, just one thing on the, uh, where it says discussion of draft charge for a selfish waterways. I had said to allow one, the option to allow one Orleans resident with an Eastham grant. So not, not that we had to, but it was an option.
It's an option, okay, change.
Yeah, just to make sure that that seat doesn't become fixed for that.
Fixed, right. Good point. Any other discussion? Uh, let's see, do I need a new motion? Let's do a new motion to, uh.
I move we approve the minutes as amended.
As amended, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A second? Any further discussion? Go to vote, Amy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jerry's an aye, so that's done. Uh, any other business?
Nope.